What these are is basically, it doesn't stop cars, but certainly brings more awareness to cars that pedestrians may be in the crosswalks. Through those discussions, we talked to them about something, a different idea, which was hybrid pedestrian beacons. We feel that that's a better solution because it physically stops cars as opposed to just getting, creating awareness and providing a warning of pedestrians in the crosswalk. So as a result of that, we were able to get, you know, Caltrans has a project where they're going to be improving crosswalks throughout Al Camino Real, throughout San Mateo County. And through our conversations with Caltrans, we're able to get two hybrid pedestrian beacons funded for the town, totally at the state cost. And those two locations at this point is identified at Isabella and at Aloahondra. So maybe if we can, you know, talk, then talk a little bit about hybrid pedestrian beacons. And so we have a short video. Some, I know some council members have seen this, but before we start the video, and this was taken by an amateur videographer, so it's not very good. But where the pointers, what this is, is that it's an installation where you have these pads up here, it's a triangle, and there's actually three lenses at each head. There's two red and one yellow. And then also you have a hole here with a pedestrian signal pad. And there's a push button, and the push, and that's what activates the signal. When the signal is activated, these pad heads activate, and then they will indicate to the pedestrian, you know, when it's, when they're supposed to cross. And it's a countdown pedestrian head, so that it tells also the pedestrian how long they have to make it across. This particular installation is in the city of Sacramento, and it's on a road that is five lanes of traffic, probably 30,000 vehicles per day. So it's a, it's a road that's smaller than Al Camino Real, but traffic volume line is very similar. So when Theresa starts it, what you're going to see is once the pedestrian activates it, you're going to see some blinking yellow lights. And basically, like any kind of signal, what that tells cars is that, okay, this is going to be turning red pretty soon. And then you're going to see the red lights come on, and then at that point, the cars have to stop. And then, and then, and then at some point, you're going to see the red lights start blinking red, which all of us know that still means they have to stop. And then, once, a lot of times when the pedestrian go across the street has, has been accomplished, then it goes dark again, which then this just resumes as a normal roadway. So Theresa, if you can start the video. So there's the blinking yellow. So the pedestrian's leaving too early. And now it's, now the, it's going to turn red. There, and that car just ran through a red light. Okay. And, but this, this bus here didn't properly, and so now it's starting to blink red. And by now, the pedestrian has crossed the street, enough time has been allotted for pedestrians to cross the street, and now the blinking red goes back to dark, which now the road just operates as it normally would.
Mike, a blinking red under the vehicle code, so a blinking red, you can stop and then go.
Proceed.
Yes.
And so that bus could have proceeded.
The bus could have proceeded as long as it was clear. As long as a pedestrian, you know, was across and it was clear.
That could be confusing. Can we just have a solid red until it goes dark?
Again, this is a standard installation that has been approved, and so I don't think we want to stray from standard installation. But, but again, it's, it's, you know, but we believe this is a lot better than blinking light here in the pavement or, or, because it physically stops.
So can you put a, if, if, going across El Camino, you might only, depending on how long it takes, you might only get halfway. In fact, today, when you cross El Camino, say, in Menlo Park, and oftentimes that's the case. You get, or people get halfway and they get stranded. So would there be also a button that they can push in the median?
Well, we would design it that way. We would design it with enough time for pedestrians to get totally across.
Using a handicaper.
So you can, you can time it, you can stand on the red light, solid red light.
Yes, we, and then again, there are standard times, you know, as far as depending on the weather, upon how long the time, you know, should be allotted for pedestrians, even, pedestrians with disabilities to get across the street.
Okay. Do they have something like this up in St. Carr? Police, you know, just installed.
Yes, and this is something that was relatively new when we started talking to Caltrans about 18 months ago. You know, at that point, it wasn't approved yet for use on a state highway, but, but that changed. And so this is approved to be used on the state highways, as councilman Wood indicated. I guess there's one in St. Carr, I assume. So again, there's currently two hybrid pedestrian beacons that are being, that's programmed as part of a Caltrans project. The status of that project is currently going through environmental review. Caltrans expects the environmental review to be complete by the end of this year. Then from there, it goes into design, and Caltrans is scheduled for design as to complete the plant specifications and estimates by the end of 2015. Then it'll be bid, and Caltrans expects this to be under construction by the end of 2016, which means that sometime in 2017 is when, you know, we should expect construction to occur here within the town. Another thing that we've been working with Caltrans on is the intersection of Selby and Al Camino Real. And this is kind of a, this is a very difficult area for, but this, here's Selby within Attletown. And this is what they call East Selby, which is in San Mateo County. This East Selby provides access to this pedestrian area that I'm not lying to you. And so what, what, council's heard, in fact, if they're going, Caltrans is, informing the council that this intersection, the warrant is to be checked. If there's one check, it's right here. So in, in February, council, you know, we brought this item to council, and we heard that this, the intersection of Selby and Al Camino Real needs warrants for traffic. And at that point, the council was not supportive of it due to the cost of, you know, paying for our share, as well as impacts to, you know, residents along Selby. And one of the things that was included in the package was a letter from Jim Porter, who, this Public Works Director of San Mateo County, indicating that the county, or doesn't see any look back to the county, so they define, you know, impact of financial participation. So this, the reason why this intersection is concerned is because over a 10-year period from 2001 to 2011, there's been, there was, there's been 50 documented vehicular accidents. During that period, all the accidents documented were vehicles only, so there has been no pedestrians accidents ever aware of. And a concern also is of the 50, half of them were broadside, which is, you know, typically the most, the highest potential for injury is, is broadside type collisions. So, so in light of the fact that there isn't support for a signal, we have had some additional conversations with Caltrans to see, okay, well, what can, can we do to try to improve the situation? You know, the problem that there is, is that for you, where you know that there's a left-turn movement, you're going northbound in Al Camino Real, you can turn left. And then there's also, if you're going southbound, you can turn left into East Selby. And given that these, what I kind of refer to as the urban force in the middle of the roadway, that combined with these, you know, left-turn lanes, visibility is not very good. And after a while, because of the volume of traffic, people, they get impatient, they make a left turn, and many times that's when these accidents occur. So what we talked to Caltrans about is a potential solution of eliminating one of the left-turn capabilities, and specifically eliminating the left turn from Al Camino into East Selby into the county. The benefit of that would be then we would be able to close off that left turn lane and create a wider median, and that, by the way, is this side of Selby where the crosswalk is, so that this is where the pedestrians cross. And by doing that, you could, we can also create what's called the intersection portal. So Theresa, if you could, this is the same, and then Theresa, if you could go to the next slide. So this is what I'm talking about here. This is the intersection of Selby and Al Camino Real. By eliminating that left turn possibility, you can fill it in with a median, which then creates a wider median here, which then allows the potential for what we, what we call an intersection portal. Theresa, if you can go to the next slide. And this is what that would look like with a wider median. So when we talk about an intersection portal, this is what we need. Where basically it's wide enough that, you know, for pedestrians can cross, you know, one, one of the lane's direction, you know, stop, make sure there's clearance again before continuing the path to the other curve. So Theresa, if you can go back to, back to this slide. Okay. So now, one of, although we think this is a great idea, we met with San Mateo County, they don't think it's such a great idea. And what, and what their, what their question was is, well, why are you eliminating the left turn going into the county as opposed to the left turn going into Selby Lane? Well, the reason and rationale for that is if we eliminated the left turn in the Selby Lane, number one, there's a lot more volume of cars going into Selby, so a lot more people would be affected. The other thing is that you would have to go all the way up to Demar, where it's a signalized intersection, to turn, make a U-turn, to come back, and then turn left. As opposed to turning left into East Selby Lane, which, you know, the letter that you see from the Public Works Director, one of the reasons they don't support the signal is because of the low volume of traffic turning left. So it'll be minimal impact to those residents, and also the solution would be for them to go, really not that far, to Fifth Avenue, which is also a signalized intersection, where they can either make a U-turn to enter where they live, their subdivision, or they can go down to Waverly, which is also another signalized intersection on Fifth, and turn left to get access into this residential area. So we discussed this with Caltrans. They think it's a good idea. They're willing to do an operational analysis, because one of the things that they have to do is to see by adding some additional, you know, U-turns here, what that does to this signal operation, but Caltrans is willing to do that. And again, we met with the Public Works Director in San Mateo County. He, you know, doesn't really support that idea, but I think there's some additional conversations that we can have. But, but again, this is, you know, just an example, one of the challenges of anything like this is that even though you might find a good technical solution, there needs to be, you know, agreement, because, you know, where you do anywhere, you're going to attack somebody.
And Mike, can't they take a left in the street prior to Selby and still get into that neighborhood down the street a little bit?
You know, that, I don't, I don't.
Turn back, it's one, it's one way.
And, and although when you look at a map, I think it's Waverly Avenue next to another street here.
Yeah.
It's actually, so it's really right behind Waverly, that is basically where, so pretty much if you want to get into this area here, you either have to access Selby Lane or you have to access Waverly. And I suspect people who live in that area, a lot of them, they opt to do that anyway because they're turning left at a signal, and they're turning left at a signal, as opposed to turning left in an area that visibility is very poor.
How do you answer that question? I travel this route every day, and have you considered the impact on the school up on Selby Lane? I mean, in the morning, the traffic is backed up on El Camino to turn left to go up Selby, to go to Selby Lane School. And it's extensive. And if you come out of Bentley, people in that neighborhood don't want traffic in that neighborhood. There's signs, you can't even turn in there to that thing. Plus, you cannot currently make a U-turn at El Camino and Fifth.
That's correct. As far as that ability.
And I doubt those people in that neighborhood are going to want traffic routed down Waverly Avenue, turning left on Selby, crossing El Camino, and going up Selby to the school. Not just a question.
Yeah, well, I'm going back to the, on your point. And I appreciate you including the, the letter from January 2013 from the Public Works Director, but, you know, Warren Slocum has asked me several times, and I'm meeting with him next week, and I told him, hey, look, we got this letter, you know. But he keeps saying that the people that live there want the light. They want a light, and the county would pay for it, but he'll, he'll get on it when, you know. So, you know, the light might still be the best idea if in fact they have that. But, but, you know, honestly, from an Attletown perspective, you did a great job. That's a great solution. And, and I like your solution, and personally, I'm sure a lot of us will, but, but I think you've done a super job with it, and, and it makes a lot of sense. But I can see where they're not going to want that, and they're going to come back with saying, we want the light, and so.
Yeah, interesting you say that, because actually, that is exactly what the Public Works Director told us, is that, well, given this, maybe they like the light better, the signal better. And with regards to your question about the U-turns, yes, currently, U-turns are restricted, but this is something that Caltrans would allow.
Yeah, but another problem you have there, if you're going north in El Camino, and I make that route every day, every morning, I delay crossing Fifth Avenue until I see the people coming southbound who want to turn on Fifth Avenue, and a lot of them run the light. There's been a lot of accidents right at that corner where people coming southbound, trying to turn on Fifth, or come straight through. And if you're there in the morning, you don't pull out ahead, you make sure that everybody on your side is stopped.
Well, you can't see, so you got both cars, they pull into that little intersection, and, and, you know, and it's a standoff. You can't see by them, they can't see by you, so they just stay there. It's a stalemate.
Well, you know, and, and actually, by eliminating this turn, left turn capability, it really, it doesn't affect what you're talking about, because the same people are going to be switched to.
Should have made a school, should have made them cross.
And then it's, it's not going to affect the ability for people to, to go to, to the school down Selby Lane, because we're not restricting that left turn movement. And I think part of, you know, whenever you're talking about these types of solutions with other agencies, when you initially say no to something, coming up with a different type of solution makes, a lot of times results in then reconsidering that first no. So, so, but the, but the point is, is that, you know, we need to continue the conversation with San Mateo County, and, and with, you know, my experience says what's very important is the elected officials continuing that conversation, because, because that's the kind of support you need to make these types of projects happen.
So I think that the county put in that close through, because the cut-through traffic to get to Fifth was tremendous. So the neighborhood said, put a block, then block off so nobody can cut through. We're talking about a very low volume of traffic making that left turn, period. I think that most, a lot of people will take the opportunity to go make the U-turn, or frankly, go to Waverly and go into that neighborhood. We're not talking about high volume of traffic, and, you know, I think your solution's very good.
I like them a lot better than the stoplights.
And then, I think that the mayor's, you know, the mayor's comment is, I think, right on, because what attracted that use was the signal. And, and that's the concern about us putting a signal there. That's going to, that could have the same type of effect of cars, an increase in traffic on Selby.
To go around there.
Because people who live down here, they're, if they want to turn right or left, they, they, you know, they're going to go to a traffic signal, because it's going to be much safer to use.
And it might promote more traffic through their neighborhood if, in fact, the lights are red. They're going to make the left turn, either going Waverly, cut through to get through, or through the neighborhood versus having to go through the Fifth backup.
So, so we need to continue conversations with Caltrans and Al Camino County, or San Mateo County at this intersection of Selby and Al Camino Real. But also, you know, more important is, you know, if the council is interested in pushing forward the idea of reducing lanes on Al Camino Real, what it's going to require is an operational analysis. That's, that's the first step that Caltrans is going to require. And so that's, that's why we included a CIP project this year for your consideration. You know, one of the questions, you know, why, well, why isn't someone else helping with planning? And within your staff report, I, I addressed that a little bit. And I think at this point, it has to do with timing, that if there's an interest, at this point, I think the town of Attletown, Attletown has really the interest in doing this. And so waiting for potential grant funding, or trying to get in the Caltrans queue to get some of their funding, possible. I don't know how successful we would be, but I can guarantee you it's going to take time.
But the county, the county is doing something on El Camino, too. Do you know what that is?
Menlo Park is. I'm not aware of the county.
Yeah, Demar's got a project. The county's got a project going on looking at El Camino as well, but regardless.
Other safety, safety policy.
That's all it's going to be.
And, and then, the, the other thing about the advantage of the town funding this, this initial operation study, is that we would then control the scope, and we would control the timing. So that, that's why at this point, staff is suggesting with the town.
But I would think, since we've got a fire district, but before we start spending, I would hope that we're at least, get some sort of, make peace with the fire district, so we have the right to do what we want to go do. They've sent us, you know, a letter.
Resolution, that was.
Yeah.
It was a resolution.
Right, right.
It was more than a, I was like, 2019.
But anyway, doesn't matter. We need to, but their, their position is still the same. We had, you know, the board member who lives in Attletown come and just, you know, talk to us, but we need to have that conversation. We need to just have the conversation, just say, hey, we're going to move forward, and we want to make sure that there's no animosity between the two, you know, the two organizations. And I think it's important.
And I think at this point, even the town can't say this is a good idea or a bad idea. That's why we need to do this operational analysis.
And Mike, would that also be something that, I mean, in consideration of reduction in lanes, considering that maybe we'd have a, the third lane solely being for emergency use only, or the bus traffic? So that would be getting the main traffic down, a reduction to two lanes.
They had that for the bus, on the bus plan, when we saw it, they had that red lane.
Oh, that was in the middle.
Well, we could do something to save for, for the fire district.
But they're not.
Something like, would that be something that would be considered in the analysis?
It ran a little of our data's, you know, discussion.
What would be considered, and what would be some of the data that comes out of the analysis? Is, you know, impacts to adjacent intersections from a level of service standpoint, the queuing that, that could occur, the travel time delays that, that could occur. So these are the kinds of questions that, whether you're, you know, emergency response.
I gotta tell you, traffic jams down high speed from Rose City through Attletown, and comes through screeching halls at Alejandra, because it's backed up into Menlo Park, through Malparizo, all the way to Alejandra, and then to Isabella, and that's just, I mean, so it clogs up in Menlo Park.
Well, see, and, well, that, that's true, but that's, that's why other agencies to the northwest may, that's, that's what the concern is going to be. Because by reducing lanes, that means traffic's going to queue further north, and then how far north is it going to queue up? Is it, is it going to start impacting Fifth Avenue?
I just think that if it's, if it's managed more reasonably from Rose City into Attletown and down, it won't all slam up. I think it would be an easier flow.
Well, that's the, that's the purpose of you.
We should look at Palo Alto, because Palo Alto is three lanes until it gets to the beginning, well, actually, until it gets halfway through into Menlo Park.
There's many more stoplights throughout the Palo Alto border there, too.
But for while, do the study. I agree with you.
Even, even if we're, to go forward, we have to do the study.
Absolutely.
So.
Yeah, so we need to go forward.
We need to go forward. Perfect.
Safety of our residents.
Are we moving?
The proposal is that we do it, not jointly with others. That's the key issue.
We can go.
And I think we're good.
And I think we're good.
I think we're good, and I think we're moving on. Moving on to item number three, the parcel tax discussion, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Roberts here to answer any specific questions, but in lieu of timing, you have the staff report. Basically, there's two spreadsheet scenarios. All the capital projects are maintained consistent across those, those that are eligible for use and expenditure by its property, by the parcel tax. The only difference between the two spreadsheets is one has a 25% reduction in the parcel tax for fiscal year 14, 15, going back to normal in the out years, and the other remains whole. So that's up for discussion this evening. This is part of your annual analysis of the parcel tax, which will come back to you year after year in this same form.
This is just review and discuss.
Review and discuss, correct. Next month, you will actually have a resolution before you accept the parcel tax, so feedback you provide this evening will help direct staff in crafting that resolution.
So first off, thanks for doing the analysis. I think, actually, the town was in very good financial shape. There are some unknowns. Of course, we have an allocated reserve, which is still quite substantial, that's not flying in, because this is just an analysis just on how the parcel tax would play in allocate when you split. And so I think we, when we said we would move forward, we said that we would look at this judiciously. I think, from my perspective, I'd, I'd like to see some reduction in what we assess for this year, without making any commitments for future years. I think that your 25% analysis looked good. You know, it could be a little bit higher, but then we're, we might be taking too much of a risk, want improvement, but we could actually go to 33%, I think. But I'd like to see, hopefully, the rest of the council will consider at least making some gesture, I think, to the taxpayer that we're spending the money, I think was, the message is, we're spending the money judiciously, and, and we're being conservative in what our projections are, and I think that that would bode well with us moving forward in some other areas, or, or moving forward in future years. So thank you for doing that analysis.
So I'll chime in, just because it seems like, I, I'm going to take the opposite side at this point, and I'm going to say, you know, that considering a reduction with the amount of capital, and I will say, this is the first time that we've had an opportunity to have some funds in our account and to start looking at planning in the future. I think that the residents of Attletown, I, I think they would appreciate the fact that we are actually looking and being responsible with funds, that we do have, and that we're not spending them on things that are frivolous by any means, so we're taking into consideration a lot of capital improvements, long-term CIPs that we have put off. We've got $20 million in, in potential drainage issues, roughly $15 million in bike master plan. I think this year, with also the considerations of alternative sources of funding, I think we're premature on releasing and saying, hey, you know, it's kind of like, we've got some money, we're, we're going to go ahead and give you a mild reduction, but next year we're going to, we probably are coming back at you to reconsider taking some more money or having what we, we currently have. That may be a discussion we could have in the future, but I think that until we transition around some alternative sources, I think it's very mature. But it's not something that I'm not willing to open up and discuss at a future date.
Mr. Mayor, I was just, I was just counter that one of the ideas on the future tax was also looking at our food structures and things like that, and that, that is a short-term limitation potentially. I mean, it's not, or was, it's not short, short, but it is. It's a shorter-term limitation, and one that we all seem to have felt, because, I think, actually, I had an analogy very similar to what you're saying, the public's theory of intersection. You know, I, I, but that's the only other problem I would make on doing whatever I need, so.
Thank you, thank you. Mike, for the volume?
Well, okay, so as I understand it, on the first scenario, there's a line item currently called property damage reimbursement.
Yes, it's property tax reimbursement. That would be changed.
So it's really not, it's really not reimbursement. It would be a decision to take 70, in this proposal, to take 75% of the special tax. So it would just be a non-taking for this year, in, in this case, that 25%. I guess if we'd increased, increased the park budget, as far as I was willing to go, we wouldn't need to do this at all. That's tongue-in-cheek. Okay. Okay. But seriously, I feel some sensitivity to the idea of reducing it in one year, knowing that the proposal is that that's a single-year reduction, and doing it when we don't have all the information in the bank from, there are various master plans that, you know, we've put into play. I mean, these are serious master plans, and we know there are big capital improvement projects sitting out there, some of which we're going to look for other funding for, but some of which we're going to fund, partly out of our, the surplus from general fund and partly from the parcel tax. So, if, I haven't personally heard a lot of clamoring for a reduction in the parcel tax, I haven't heard that. Now, I, I think the people always appreciate it, when elected officials are looking at reducing taxes, and we're in a situation where we could do that, so I think it's an appropriate thing to evaluate. I guess I do feel some sympathy with what the mayor said around making a decision to do it before we have the information in hand, and I don't want to mislead people to set them up to think that we're going, you know, we don't need the parcel tax, when in fact we may well need it because of the capital improvement projects. And what I have heard from lots of residents is that there are infrastructure improvements that residents want to see, that this town hasn't done in many, many years.
Councilwoman Lewis.
So, I can understand Councilmember Lewis's position, and his desire to, in a certain way, reduce the collection of the parcel tax. He was in favor of passing the parcel tax in 14 May, but given, I think it's irresponsible to suggest that we do it at this time, in light of the fact that we're looking at this large El Camino rail study for the safety and health of our residents and those who travel through it, and the master plans that we are talking about, the big price tags to them, and the government advice about parcel taxes. These parcel taxes, certainly, feel that their investment in the parcel tax is the best thing for their back in supporting Atherton in police services as well as the public safety. So I really feel that it's, with all the pension liabilities that we still have to pay them, and the parcel tax funds are not to be used for them, they're to be used for the capital improvement programs and police safety, but I just, for services, I feel that it's decided, and you're responsible to suggest that we reduce the collection of it at this time.
I would like to make, please, number one, the parcel tax got approved unanimously. And I wrote, along with Alyssa, the pro statement, so I think that the comment that I was against the parcel tax, it was a very unfair comment. I did say, on the parcel tax, that I felt that, if you remember, to offset the general fund money so we could continue to pay down our off-balance sheet liabilities, which we put $2 million in at my request and in support of, but as well as everybody else's, and we talked about putting another million with the E-RAP numbers, which was an excellent idea of the city manager. So I think continuing to pay down the OPEB is well in hand, but I think a million dollars this year in potential E-RAP numbers for the following year is going to get us where we need to be. So I do think that, as I stand by my comments, I disagree with the assessment and the labeling that occurred here.
Okay, I'll just say, then, in order to get the parcel tax approved unanimously, we had to reconsider a vote, that it was very difficult to do. So initially, you put roadblocks in the way of-
Mr. Mayor? No, no. We have a requirement in our code that says no personal attacks back and forth, and I've got to say, it's uncomfortable right now. I don't think it's appropriate to-
You're making a point by not using names, I can just say, I think it's this way, and he can say, I think it's this way, but you know, you really stop personal attacks.
Well, I apologize, but, you know, I can understand why you are making the decision that you're making.
Beautiful. George, any final comments?
We'll bring back a resolution for this evening, which from my impression, just to clarify, is a resolution, we think it does it.
Sounds great. Beautiful, I think we're on time.
And then we'll look at it again next year, as we need to look.
Every year. So, in the interest of the German-
We have a public comment. Please come on up.
I just have one question. Do all the council members have a five-year general fund balance projections?
They have. They don't have the deceiving.
We did have a question, I was presenting one at the last council meeting.
So, so they know that we're projecting fund balances at the end of 2015 of 10 and a half million, ranging up to 16 and a half million over five years, and that's not including any E-RAP money? I just think that should be considered when you're looking at possible-